Good evening. Welcome to the November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen Troy City Council meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Baker lead us with the invocation, so if you would please stand for that, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day and thanks for the blessings you bestowed upon each one of us. We ask that you continue to bless us throughout this evening's meeting, as we sit at the council table, have council members treat each other with respect and the dignity that this office deserves. We ask that you be with all of our citizens of Troy, as many of them are concerned about the water issues affecting their households, and also with the citizens of Troy and throughout the country who are feeling anxious or concerned about last week's elections results, please bring us all together as a country and be with us always. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember McCown?
Here.
All present. Our first order of business this evening is two thousand and sixteen seventeen city council installation in A, B two A is the appointment of the Mayor Pro Tem. So I would call on Councilwoman Abraham to move a resolution. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move Resolution B two A, resolve that Troy City Council hereby appoints Council Member Hoderick to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for the City Council of the City of Troy for a term scheduled to expire at seven thirty PM on Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Support.
By Councilwoman Abraham, supported by Mayor Pro Tem, Pennington, that we hereby appoint Councilwoman Hoderick to serve as the Mayor Pro Tem for the City Council of the City of Troy for the term scheduled to expire at seven thirty PM on Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Ellen. Next, we will have the swearing in of the Mayor Pro Tem. If we could ask Councilwoman Hoderick to move down to the front?
I do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Mayor Pro Tem in and for the City of Troy, the County of Oakland, the State of Michigan, according to the best compliance abilities of all time.
Do we clap? Two B C is the adoption of the two thousand and sixteen seventeen city council rules of procedure. Would someone like to move that resolution?
I'll...
Councilman Baker?
I'd like to move two B C, resolve that Troy City Council hereby amends the rules of procedure of the City Council of the City of Troy as recorded by the City Clerk in the minutes of this meeting.
Support.
By Councilman Baker, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we hereby, the Troy City Council hereby amends the rules of procedure of the City Council of the City of Troy as recorded by the City Clerk in the minutes of this meeting. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Subsection D is the adoption of the Code of Ethics for City Council. Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move Section D, the adoption of Code of Ethics for City Council, resolve that the City of Troy hereby adopts or amends the Code of Ethics of the City Council of the City of Troy as recorded by the City Clerk in the minutes of this meeting.
Support.
By Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilman Baker, that we, the City Council hereby adopts or amends the Code of Ethics of the City Council of the City of Troy as recorded by the City Clerk in the minutes of this meeting. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Subsection E is the adoption, adoption of Code of Ethics for boards and committees. Councilman Baker?
I'll move Subsection E, adoption of Code of Ethics for boards and committees, resolve that Troy City Council hereby adopts the Code of Ethics for boards and committees of the City of Troy as recorded by the City Clerk in the minutes of this meeting.
Support.
By Councilman Baker and supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we, Troy City Council hereby adopts or amends the Code of Ethics for the Boards and Committees of the City of Troy as recorded by the City Clerk in the minutes of this meeting. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Subsection F is the proposed resolution to allow Pennington Collision to remain on the list of eligible vendors. Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move B two F, Proposed Resolution to Allow Pennington Collision to Remain on the List of Eligible Vendors, and I'd like to read that into the record. Whereas the owner of Pennington Collision is also an elected City Council member, and whereas Section six point twelve A of the Troy City Charter requires that in order for there to be any possible business relationship between the city and a business in which a City Council member or his or her immediate family has a pecuniary interest, the other City Council members must agree unanimously to pass a resolution making the business eligible to conduct business with the City of Troy. Now therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby recuses Councilmember Pennington from voting. Be it further resolved that the Troy City Council declares that Pennington Collision is eligible to conduct business with the City of Troy as allowed by the Troy City Charter, Section six point one two A.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve B two F, Proposed Resolution to Allow Pennington Collision to Remain on the List of Eligible Vendors, as read into the record by Councilman Henderson. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is Certificates of Recognition and Special Presentations. We have two this evening. C one is a presentation to the Mayor and City Council of the two thousand and seventeen Shenyang Performances at the Detroit Opera House, and I see Cindy Stewart, our Community Affairs Director, is at the podium to make an introduction. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I have with me two of our Troy residents, and we're all so proud that we are one of the most diverse cities in Michigan, so it takes them great pride to introduce what is coming back again to the Detroit area, the Shenyang. We have a very short video, and then they're going to give you a little bit of information.
Thank you.
Five thousand years of Chinese music and dance in one night. Incredible, groundbreaking, a cultural phenomenon. A must-see. Experience Shenyang, coming to Detroit Opera House, December twenty-second through twenty-seven. Tickets at shenyang.com.
I'm shocked. I, I can't praise this show enough.
I have traveled this earth, probably through every corner. I've never seen anything like this. It's unbelievable.
I'm incredibly inspired after coming tonight.
I feel thirty years younger.
Normally I'm bored when she takes me to these things, but I loved it. I could go another couple hours.
It was just amazing.
See it one hundred more times.
I will probably brag and say I got to see it and you didn't, so they have to come with me next time.
If you try to describe it, they're gonna go, "What?" Do you have to see it with your eyes?
How many things do you see in life that touch you and make you that hopeful?
I'm not ashamed to say I cried, but it just had to move you because there's not enough of that now in the world.
Every seat is taken. I can see why now.
The most adorable part for me is seeing my daughter just smile the whole time.
It made me feel like coming home.
The feelings that they make in your heart and your soul, it's, I'm speechless. It was really beautiful.
And now I'd like to present for you, for some information, Julia Song and Valerie Evore.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Slater. Good evening, members of the City Council, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to say thank you for this opportunity to talk about Shenyang Performing Arts. It's always my pleasure. Shenyang is the best classical Chinese dance and music performance in the world. Shenyang established in year two thousand and six in New York. It has grown from one group to five equal-sized groups tour around the world. Every year over four hundred shows, over twenty countries, more than one hundred big cities. Most big cities recent years, tickets all sold out. So Shenyang means the beauty of divine being dancing. Shenyang has a lot of uniqueness. I cannot have enough time to mention every single one of them, but I want to mention one, is Shenyang produce a whole new twenty programs every year. So come join us with a spectacular event, you know, in this holiday season. We look forward to seeing you there. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. I have seen this show, and it is everything that they said up there. It's incredible show. Thank you again for coming this evening. Next is a service commendation for Ted Halsey, and if I could ask Ted to meet me at the microphone, I'm honored to make this presentation to my friend. Can you come over here? Yes. He needs the microphone. You can have your face as my... Hi, Ted.
Glad to meet you.
Glad to meet me. I've had the honor of working with Ted in the Police Department. I started in nineteen seventy-four, and Ted retired in nineteen eighty-four. And Ted worked in the Detective Bureau the whole ten years that I worked there with you, and handled some pretty interesting cases in those years. Troy was...
We did.
Troy was interesting back then. But Ted, it's my honor and a privilege to be here tonight to present to you a service commendation, and it's for a Traffic Committee member, but I know I've talked to you, and I was talking to you earlier, you actually have been in the City of Troy since nineteen So you've been more than just a Traffic Committee member, and of course, this resolution will indicate some of that, but it's truly an honor for me to be here tonight, Ted, to present this to you. And I'd like to read it into the record. Whereas Ted Halsey served on the Traffic, Troy Traffic Committee for thirty years, from October fourteenth, nineteen eighty-five, and served until December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. And whereas Ted Halsey served the citizens of Troy as a police officer from August tenth, nineteen fifty-seven, until he retired on December fourteenth, nineteen eighty-four. And whereas Ted Halsey became a dedicated Troy volunteer firefighter at Station One on May seventh, nineteen sixty-three, until retiring on December seventeenth, nineteen eighty-four. And whereas the Mayor and City Council of the City of Troy wished to express, on behalf of the city, their appreciation to Ted Halsey in recognition of outstanding service to the community. And whereas the quality of life that the City of Troy offers is a result of hard work, planning, sacrifice, and leadership. Thanks to Ted, one of Troy's dedicated volunteers, our quality city services will continue to thrive in our key to making Troy the greatest place to live in the state of Michigan. And now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council takes this opportunity to express its sincere appreciation and recognition to Ted Halsey for his distinguished service and his many contributions to the betterment of the city through his work on the Troy Traffic Committee, as well as the Troy Police Department and the Troy Fire Department. And be it further resolved that by donating his time and talents, Ted Halsey has furthered the ideals that contribute to enriching our community. Troy is very fortunate to have citizens like Ted, who give so much time and energy to make our community a great place to work, play, and raise a family. This is presented this fourteenth day of November, two thousand and sixteen, signed by myself, all members of the City Council. Thank you so much, Ted, for what you've done for our city. Congratulations, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I have seen this show, and it is everything that they said up there. It's incredible show. Thank you again for coming this evening. Next is a service commendation for Ted Halsey, and if I could ask Ted to meet me at the microphone, I'm honored to make this presentation to my friend. I started in nineteen seventy-four, and Ted retired in nineteen eighty-four. And Ted worked in the Detective Bureau the whole ten years that I worked there with you, and handled some pretty interesting cases in those years. Troy was...
We did.
Troy was interesting back then. But Ted, it's my honor and a privilege to be here tonight to present to you a service commendation, and it's for a Traffic Committee member, but I know I've talked to you, and I was talking to you earlier, you actually have been in the City of Troy since nineteen fifty.
That's right.
So you've been more than just a Traffic Committee member, and of course, this resolution will indicate some of that, but it's truly an honor for me to be here tonight, Ted, to present this to you. And I'd like to read it into the record. Whereas Ted Halsey served on the Traffic, Troy Traffic Committee for thirty years, from October fourteenth, nineteen eighty-five, and served until December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. And whereas Ted Halsey served the citizens of Troy as a police officer from August tenth, nineteen fifty-seven, until he retired on December fourteenth, nineteen eighty-four. And whereas Ted Halsey became a dedicated Troy volunteer firefighter at Station One on May seventh, nineteen sixty-three, until retiring on December seventeenth, nineteen eighty-four. And whereas the Mayor and City Council of the City of Troy wished to express, on behalf of the city, their appreciation to Ted Halsey in recognition of outstanding service to the community. And whereas the quality of life that the City of Troy offers is a result of hard work, planning, sacrifice, and leadership. Thanks to Ted, one of Troy's dedicated volunteers, our quality city services will continue to thrive in our key to making Troy the greatest place to live in the state of Michigan. And now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council takes this opportunity to express its sincere appreciation and recognition to Ted Halsey for his distinguished service and his many contributions to the betterment of the city through his work on the Troy Traffic Committee, as well as the Troy Police Department and the Troy Fire Department. And be it further resolved that by donating his time and talents, Ted Halsey has furthered the ideals that contribute to enriching our community. Troy is very fortunate to have citizens like Ted, who give so much time and energy to make our community a great place to work, play, and raise a family. This is presented this fourteenth day of November, two thousand and sixteen, signed by myself, all members of the City Council. Thank you so much, Ted, for what you've done for our city. Congratulations, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I have seen this show, and it is everything that they said up there. It's incredible show. Thank you again for coming this evening. Next is a service commendation for Ted Halsey, and if I could ask Ted to meet me at the microphone, I'm honored to make this presentation to my friend. Whereas Ted Halsey served the citizens of Troy as a police officer from August tenth, nineteen fifty-seven, until he retired on December fourteenth, nineteen eighty-four. And whereas Ted Halsey became a dedicated Troy volunteer firefighter at Station One on May seventh, nineteen sixty-three, until retiring on December seventeenth, nineteen eighty-four. And whereas the Mayor and City Council of the City of Troy wished to express, on behalf of the city, their appreciation to Ted Halsey in recognition of outstanding service to the community. And whereas the quality of life that the City of Troy offers is a result of hard work, planning, sacrifice, and leadership. Thanks to Ted, one of Troy's dedicated volunteers, our quality city services will continue to thrive in our key to making Troy the greatest place to live in the state of Michigan. And now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council takes this opportunity to express its sincere appreciation and recognition to Ted Halsey for his distinguished service and his many contributions to the betterment of the city through his work on the Troy Traffic Committee, as well as the Troy Police Department and the Troy Fire Department. And be it further resolved that by donating his time and talents, Ted Halsey has furthered the ideals that contribute to enriching our community. Troy is very fortunate to have citizens like Ted, who give so much time and energy to make our community a great place to work, play, and raise a family. This is presented this fourteenth day of November, two thousand and sixteen, signed by myself, all members of the City Council. Thank you so much, Ted, for what you've done for our city. Congratulations, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1557.13]
work alone. In fact, most of the work was done by management representatives who are all indicated on the memorandum. So what they did notice is that there is no purchase power without advanced city council approval in those emergency situations. And so one of the things that this proposed ordinance amendment would do is it would tie into our emergency operations plan. And in fact, you have another item which is on the table that is necessary because we don't have a provision that's similar to this. So that's one of the things that this proposed ordinance amendment will do is it will tie in whenever the emergency operations plan is activated, then it would allow for purchases in excess of $10,000, subject to certain conditions. Another thing that this proposed amendment does is it allows for a blanket resolution to authorize emergency purchases exceeding $10,000 in those circumstances when it doesn't rise to the level of activation of the emergency operations plan, but it is urgent and necessary and unforeseen. And so that is all contained within there. And another thing that this does also is it requires that if that does occur, that there be affirmation and a presentation to city council at the very next meeting. So after the service is rendered or after the goods are received, there should be a report and an opportunity for council to affirm the purchases that were already made. This proposed amendment was presented as an informational item at the October 24th meeting, and we have produced for you, we've proposed a resolution, first of all, adopting the ordinance revision change, and then secondly, there is a proposed blanket resolution for council's consideration. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, as are the other members that were involved.
Thank you. Any questions for City Attorney Bloom from council or staff? I think the memo was very clear, and there were some questions asked this afternoon and answered, so somebody would like to move the resolution? Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move I four, amendment to City Ordinance, Chapter Seven, Item Nine, declared emergency, A and B as printed.
Support by Councilman Pennington and supported by Councilman McCowen that we approve I four, the amendment of the City Ordinance, Chapter Seven, Item Nine, declared emergency, both A and B as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you for the work on that. I know there are other blanket resolutions that are being also looked at as well. I five is the next agenda item that was placed on the table, but before we do that, I'd like to move to waive the rules to add I five to the agenda packet this evening.
Support.
By the chair and supported by Mayor Protem Hoderek that we waive the rules of procedure and add I five, the emergency purchase of bottled water, to the agenda packet this evening. Discussion. The vote on waiving the rules?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. I will call upon City Manager Kishnik to let us know about I five, the emergency purchase of bottled water, and I believe we're also going to talk about some other issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. The I five is simply the emergency purchase for bottled water, which is one component of the entire emergency operations response in response to the 84-inch main break on South Boulevard just west of Dequinder. I've asked, before we get into this issue, since it is one component of purchasing bottled water to put in at Firefighters Park for people who need water, I wanted to have the chief come up and DPW Director Kurt Abovensee, and then Paul Trosper, who's knee-deep in water.
Not for long.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The purpose of this will be to give a very brief overview, as a general overview, of what occurred and our response. As you all know, on Sunday, November 23, approximately 2:45 in the morning, the police department came aware through some calls from citizens of loss of water pressure at their residences. We got a call about a high degree of water flowing on South Boulevard. Police officers responded, noted the water main break. We called the duty officer, police department duty officer, and the Director of Public Works. They went up to that location and pretty quickly decided we needed to implement our emergency operations plan. So we activated our emergency operations center. We also directly coordinated with Beaumont Hospital because of the close proximity of the break at Dequinder and South Boulevard. Beaumont Hospital had a lot of concerns with the 700 patients that they have on site, so we coordinated with them. We closed the roadways at John R. and South Boulevard and Dequinder and South Boulevard. We got barricades from ourselves and the DPW. Those have since been replaced by the vendor that Detroit, I'm sorry, Great Lakes Water Authority has placed on the site, so the roadway is closed. The Road Commission of Oakland County has inspected the roadway and determined that there's no damage to the roadway. There's no long-term damage to the roadway itself, which is good news in the long run. The Great Lakes Water Authority contractor is currently on site. They're cleaning. They've pretty much cleaned up. They're going to continue to clean up the location, remediate the water that's on site, and they're working to do the water main repair. There was an 84-inch main that was broke, and the DPW representatives will explain that a little bit further later. We did issue a boil water advisory to the West District of Troy. We've sent out press releases via various means that we have. We use GovDelivery. We sent that out to 5,000 people. We've used social media. We've done postings on our website, and then we've gone back to our very good relationship with the radio, print, and television media and used them to get the word out. The fire department planned for additional resources. Fortunately, there was no need for it, but they did have a plan in place for additional resources for a water tank via mutual aid with Orion Township, so that was available. As I said, fortunately, there was no need to utilize that, and they did inspect facilities to ensure that the sprinkler systems in some of the facilities worked before going along with the idea that we'd allow them to open up. Long-term care facilities were contacted by the police department. They initiated their emergency operations plan, ensured they had water for their residents. The school districts, all three of the school districts in the affected area were contacted by various means, and they implemented their own plans, so that went very well. Many local restaurants had to close. Health department will work with them upon opening up again. The water distribution that brings us here tonight has started up at Firefighters Park. It's a joint venture by the police and fire department, as well as other portions of the city. DPW will be involved to make sure we can get water out to residents that need bottled water. We also have been working with the Parks and Rec and the community center through the Meals on Wheels program to ensure that anybody that is unable to have food or to do the food preparation because of the water issues will be able to have meals brought to them. There's criteria that they have. You have to be over 60 years old, and you have to be unable to drive yourself, so we'll make sure we're taking care of our people with that. The DPW will also have people available for water delivery for people who may be homebound and can't get out to get water, so we'll be able to get bottled water to them through the DPW and the police department. We do have a homebound individual number where they can contact. If they need that information, that'll be 248-524-3384. We'll make sure we publicize that. We've already done that. We've established a 24-hour call center line that's staffed by DPW personnel during regular business hours, and then we'll fault over to the police department emergency dispatch for after hours until we get through this. Every time we have an incident like this, we learn lessons. We did a very good job. There's always room for improvement. We will have a debriefing after this, do a good critical look at it, and make sure that we correct any issues we may come up with. While things have gone very well, there are a couple areas we have cited that we know we could do better, and that is mainly utilizing some of the newer technology for, say, cellphone alerts or a reverse 911 system, both of which we don't currently have, so we're going to relook at that. We'll probably go in that direction. That'll be part of our lessons learned. There are many, many people on city staff that made this all possible. We've talked before. I often say it's because the city has very good people working for it that we're able to get through these things. There are so many people that I couldn't possibly mention everybody that made this possible, but it seemed to be going very well at this point.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. I'm going to talk specifically, Chief did a good job overviewing the emergency operations plan and how that operated, but to talk specifically about what happened. The water main is under the ownership and operation of the Great Lakes Water Authority. It's an 84-inch water main that feeds several communities, including the City of Troy. That's pumped out of the station at Dequinder and South Boulevard. When that main broke, Great Lakes Water Authority immediately shut down all distribution out of that center, which included both feeds that feed the northern half of the City of Troy. Once that was operational again, we took a look at it, and we recognized that the west half of the city, which has fed off that 84-inch water main, went below a very specific criteria set by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality of 20 pounds per square inch of pressure within that water main. And Water and Sewer Operations Manager Paul Trosper here in a minute will talk specifically about what that means and why we have to go to that boil water advisory when that happens. So where we stand right now is we have successfully taken sampling throughout the affected area. Great Lakes Water Authority has agreed to do that sampling for us, which is important because we have a faster turnaround time. We don't have our own laboratories. We would typically use a third party where Great Lakes Water Authority has the staff to do that immediately. We are expecting the final results tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, and pending those results, we will likely rescind the boil water advisory area and allow residents to then again use the drinking water safely. And then, like I said, Paul Trosper will speak directly why we have to do this boil water advisory.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Whenever you have a pressurized system and that system loses its pressure, you are now susceptible to outside influence. So a perfect example is just say when this all happened, there was someone in a residence that may had a mop bucket full of dirty water. They had a hose in it. They were filling it, and all of a sudden, this pressure dropped, and now, because of the situation, this could have backflow fed back into our system. We don't know that. We have to make sure that we take every consideration into the fact that something like that could possibly have happened. We really don't believe that there was any contamination, but we have to make sure. And, you know, that's why we're so adamant about backflow devices in the first place. You know, if backflow devices are in place, it stops this kind of situation from ever happening. And basically, we're just being sure. We want to make sure the safety of everyone is our top priority. And if it has to be that we have to boil water for a couple days, it's much better than the result of than somebody getting sick. And I'd rather say that, yes, I made you boil water for a couple days than to say you got sick because we didn't.
Thank you. Any questions from council for staff regarding the incident? City Manager Kishnik?
Could I just follow up and ask Mr. Trosper to talk about where we stand today? We had several phone conversations with Great Lakes Water Authority Director Sue McCormick today, who was very responsive and returned our call with information within 30 minutes.
Absolutely.
So the first round of tests, why don't you talk about that?
Sure. So our system right now, we are at full pressure across the whole city. We only lost pressure because of our quick response and thinking this through for about a two- or three-hour period. Right away, we realized that we weren't going to be able to supply water to that northern part of that area without making an emergency connection that was in place at vitro. So for us to basically implement that, we had to get Great Lakes Water Authority out there to turn their system on, their valves on, so that we could now feed that system, that whole area from that main, the 54-inch main that's still in place. And I'm just very thankful. We did have this connection that has been in place since that 54 was put in back in, I believe, the late 60s, and it was never removed. And we are, like I say, we're at full pressure, and we plan on staying that way, on the way we are, until they have good water and good samples in this 84-inch water main. I will not turn on our connection at Cook's Road to that 84 until Great Lakes Water Authority tells me they have chlorinated, flushed that main, and have sampled it and tell me that there is fresh, clean water that they're willing to put back into our main. Till that point, we'll leave it just like we are because we're holding our own. We have fire protection. We have everything, and once we pull this boil water, everyone will have clean drinking water.
City Manager Kishnik?
It's reassuring to have such a knowledgeable guy.
Yes.
Who understands where everything is out in the field. I just have to say that first. But what he didn't tell you was the first round of samples were taken yesterday with the results today that were good news, and then tests were taken this morning. We're 24 hours. Tomorrow, we'll know, and then we can make the determination if the boil water advisory is then lifted, and then, as Chief Mayor talked about, utilize all the media outlets. And I know several of you were getting that word out a lot through social media as well. So that's what Mr. Trosper was telling you.
I were, yeah. There's a lot to remember about what's happened the last couple days.
It's been a busy couple days.
Yeah, I bet, I bet. Councilman Henderson?
Kudos to getting us up and running. That was pretty quick, and we fielded a lot of questions, social media and phone calls, emails and whatnot, but just a couple of questions that came out that I have no idea. First off, when we get the all-clear and the no boil, is there anything that people have to do to flush out their systems or just business as usual?
No, actually, the samples that we took today were all good. The water system, we never really received any water into our system from the bad main. The most concern we had was if, like I was saying, maybe there was a backflow situation that could have occurred because of the situation of a low pressure or a negative pressure in our system. We don't suspect that happened, but we have to make sure, by, you know, no doubt that there wasn't. And the sampling today has proven today that it's looking good, and by tomorrow, we'll have the second set of samples, and everything will be back to normal as far as the water quality. The connections won't be back to normal until Great Lakes Water Authority finishes the repair, which is going to be a lengthy process. It's a very complicated repair. It's not something that you just do in a matter of minutes. This is a major, major repair.
Just to follow up to that, Councilman, you know, we estimate that the water turnover, if you will, so the water that's currently in the pipes turns over every 24 hours, just with, even without drinking the water. We're still using water. We're taking showers. We're doing laundry, those types of things. So the potential for contamination, which is one of the reasons why we do a second sample, because we have two turnovers in our system just to double-check that there is no contamination.
Okay, the follow-up to that is, you mentioned Great Lakes Water Authority and the repair. Do they pay for that repair, or is that the City of Troy?
It's on them.
It's on them. So this is, other than the inconvenience and the time that we spent on the cost situation?
We're members of Great Lakes Water Authority, so it's a consortium. We will have a spread out cost in the end, but direct cost to make this repair, the answer is no.
Okay. And then lastly, this is just a question for me. It's an 84-inch pipe, so that's like seven feet. We could walk down the middle of these pipes. Is, in order to lose pressure, are those pipes full, completely full of water all the time?
Actually, I did some calculations today, and if that pipe was at normal operating, the six miles of it that run through Troy would normally have a capacity of 9,126,000 and about 420 gallons of water.
So it is full, the entire?
It's full, and it's usually running at about 90 PSI or close to 100.
That's how you get your pressure, right?
Yes.
Councilman Pennington?
Thank you. First of all, Paul, I had to tell you, the gray shirt with the paisley tie looks really sharp. Secondly, the questions I fielded were for the infrastructure. A couple people asked me, this is not an aging infrastructure problem. It's a high-pressure, one-off leak, I would hope.
Well, this type of water main is known across the nation as being probably one of the most durable types of water main. It is. It's a concrete outer shell, has a steel liner that's pre-stressed. It's got wire run around it, and then in the inside, it's, once again, concrete. It can handle extreme pressures, extreme situations. But just like anything else that is man-made or mechanical, there are times that there are failures. And I don't believe it has anything to do with its aging infrastructure. These pipes are known to last over 100 years. And I've been here 30 years. We've had two failures on the Detroit system since I've been here, one on the 54 and one on this. And sure, they've had them in other locations, but you've got to remember that this summer, they were pumping, on average, 470 million gallons a day into our homes. And anything that takes that much pressure and stress, sooner or later, something is going to fail. It's inevitable.
Just to follow up, how old is that pipe again?
It was actually, in 1974, Oakland County funded a very large water main project that really benefited Troy. And a lot of the bigger water main that is in Troy was all placed at that time, and that was one of them.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Those who know me know my background is communication, and I just really appreciate the communication that came to council, that went out to the community, knowing what you were dealing with, taking the time to actually fill us in enough that we could deal with questions that came to us in that nearly as an informed way as we would like, but in a sufficient manner to help residents drive them to where they could get more specific information was really quite amazing. To wake up on a Sunday morning and kind of grab my cellphone and sit at my computer and start communicating, because at the end of the day, it's about keeping people safe. We take for granted our ability to turn on our faucet, flush our toilets, take our shower, and, you know, yesterday morning was a moment of reminding us how important it is, and just the ability to tell people where they could go for information and how they could keep up to speed was very valuable, and I really appreciate the extra effort on that.
Any other comments, questions? Well done. I got very, very few emails that were negative. Most of it pertained to the media that misrepresented the district. That was about the only negative that I heard, that they kept pushing out that it was all of Troy or that it was from Rochester Road West and down to 14 Mile Road. But other than that, it was all good stuff. So thanks again for all your hard work. I'm sure you've been up for a long time now.
When you do this type of work, you kind of live for this.
Okay, okay. You prepare for it and...
You prepare for it, and you hope you never have to do it, but you do prepare for it.
Okay, Paul.
It's a challenge, you take the challenge and you make it work.
I see a side of you that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is a resolution on the table attached to I-5, it's on the back. It might be good if somebody's willing to read that resolution into the record. Councilman Baker.
I'd like to move I-5, Emergency Purchasing Resolution Bottled Water. Whereas as a result of the Great Lakes Water Authority, GLWA, water main break on South Boulevard between John R. Road and Dequinder on November 13, 2016, there has been a water quality slash water boil advisory impacting a large number of city of Troy residents and businesses. And whereas as a result of the GLWA water main break, the city of Troy officially activated its emergency operations plan. And whereas city administration is desirous of providing bottled water for our residents and business owners impacted by the GLWA water main break. And whereas city administration has contacted Gordon Food Service, Inc., who recognizes the emergency situation and is willing to provide the city with bottled water at cost, and is willing to deliver cases of bottled water to a drop-off location in Firefighters Park. And whereas depending on the number of residents and businesses that seek bottled water and the length of time the water, of the water quality slash water boil advisory, the cost of the bottled water may exceed $10,000. Now, therefore, city of council hereby approves the purchase of bottled water from Gordon Food Service, Inc. of Grand Rapids, Michigan, at a cost of $3.80 per case and distribution to affected Troy residents and business, businesses as a result of the November 13, 2016 GLWA water main break until the water quality slash water boil advisory has been lifted.
Support. By Councilman Baker and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve I-5, the Emergency Purchasing Resolution Bottled Water, as read into the record by Councilman Baker. Discussion further. Just a comment, thank you to Gordon Food Service for providing this to the residents at cost. Thank you to them. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you for making that air before I did. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Has anyone on council wished to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move all items on a consent agenda as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the packet this evening. Discussion. The vote, the vote. Oh, Councilman Baker.
There was an amendment to one of them, so it should be as printed, the J-6, 2017 city council meeting schedule, so it should be as amended by.
As amended on the yellow sheet that was placed on the table this evening. Correct?
Correct, yep. Good catch, thanks.
J-2C.
Okay. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes if you are here on a consent agenda item this evening. They've all been approved. Next, our memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none submitted this evening. So now, we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Mr. Ashland is still here?
He's outside.
Oh. Mr. Ashland, it's your turn.
Mr. Ashland, please. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Good evening.
I want to commend our Public Works Department and Curt, the Police Department, the Great Lakes Water Authority, all the folks who responded to this problem. But I must also say that we have an obligation, when we're talking about public safety, to notify all of our residents as quickly as possible. Ellen talked about this, I mean, not Ellen, councilperson Hoderek.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem Hoderek referred to this as the interest in having good communications. What I think we could do, and I, is set up a system, maybe using our water department billing, where we could add phone numbers over time and email addresses. So that when something like this happened, we could blanket send emails to everybody that receives water in the city, notifying them of this. Not with a lot of detail, but directing them to the source that we want them to go to to get accurate information. You mentioned you had information of people who thought it was all of Troy. The boundaries were uncertain. We could have put the map on our city website, but with this blanket email, everybody could have a central point for getting accurate and up-to-date information. We could also send telephone calls, not at 3:00 in the morning or whenever this occurred, but maybe at 7:30 or 8:00 in the morning. A blanket telephone call to every resident who pays a water bill, telling them there is a problem, please go to the website and look. And we will, you will be directed in what to do and the type of problem and what to do. And then we could send periodic updates to know, to let people know that we're on top of this. We run our first test, we'll have the results in the morning, look for another email in the morning, and another phone call. And after that, the second test, or whatever it takes. Because, now, I'm a senior. I use email, I use a cell phone, I use a landline. I don't use social media. And I always think of the very old retirees, there are some even older than me, who maybe don't use those things either. And maybe they don't, they don't find out about this. And even younger people I have met today didn't know of this. And we were lucky, this was not a major health issue. But we could have something that was a major health issue. And I would hate to rely on the social medias and newspapers in the area to contact our citizens. I didn't even, had I known, sure, I could have called Ellen, I could have called any number of people. But first, you have to know there's a reason to call. And that's why I think this phone system or something akin to it would be very useful. So that's just an idea I have, and I think it would be a good project, particularly since we seem to have a fund balance. It might cost money for the technology to do this. I think it would be money well spent on public safety to help ensure that all of our residents are safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any reply, apply from council, Councilman Baker.
I, yeah, I didn't speak earlier when we were talking about this, but I, to Mr. Ashland's point, I have long been, I wouldn't say concerned is the right word, but I've always been curious as to how we notify somebody in an emergency in this city. At our retreat in the winter, one of the ideas we talked about when we were coming up with strategies for 2016 was with regard to a new website, and I was really big on some kind of, not necessarily a cell phone app, but push alerts, something that could alert in a mass system. I knew, I know we do have, I believe we have, an opt-in email alert system already. I don't know if that's as well-publicized as it should be at this point. Perhaps this would be a good time to speak about it more. But I was very pleased to hear Chief Mayor speak that, you know, after we get through this issue, they'll be looking at potential ways to move forward for further and better notification, including reverse 911 calls and cell phone alerts, I believe you mentioned also. I think it is important, several people contacted me on Sunday, you know, later in the morning, who, because it was a Sunday, they weren't necessarily up and looking at their phones or checking their emails or paying attention to the news, who were terrified because they'd already brushed their teeth and they'd already done certain things. And, you know, I, of course, had nothing to calm them down, but I'm glad to hear the tests were good so far. But I don't know how exactly that process should work, but I think it would be wise for the city to look at potential software or anything to further the process for notification for these kind of situations, because unfortunately, they do happen. Not as often as in other places here in Troy, which is great, but, you know, we wouldn't want to be caught behind the eight ball on that in the future.
Councilman Pennington, did you wish to speak?
No, just rubbing my chin.
City Manager Kishnik, I would assume the debriefing will cover ways to improve, I would assume, correct?
Yeah, a large part of it's going to be on communication. I know that's, we've sat in the conference room all day today, and that was the common theme, how do, how do you reach everyone and what, what can we do? So that will be talked about at length.
Thank you. Any other comments, council response? There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Any comments from council this evening? Councilman Pennington.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Our country celebrated Veterans Day last week in support of all who have served, served in the armed forces. We had a ceremony Friday that, what, I was not able to attend, I want to apologize for that. I had to work, Fridays are busy at Pennington Collision, unfortunately, or fortunately. But, you know, I don't celebrate Veterans Day just on November 11th. I acknowledge veterans 365 days a year. Anyone who is willing to sacrifice their time and effort and sometimes their lives deserves our support, and I hold them in high regard. And I want to thank all our veterans out there in Troy.
Thank you, I echo that. Any other council comments? Councilman Henderson.
I just wanted to make reference to Mayor, Councilman McCowen, and myself's, well, even Councilman Baker's facial hair.
I see where you're at.
This is, this is Movember, comes around once a year, and it's, this is in support of awareness for men's health. And I know, I know the city manager is trying to grow one, but we don't see any remnants of that.
I thought, I thought you said he was going to do it this year.
I thought, but I think he bailed on us. So it is a, it's, it's a great cause. Movember is a Live Strong, it's a website that you can go and contribute and just build awareness and support men's health. And I'm a, I'm a walking testimony to early detection for certain men's cancers. And if it wasn't for people alerting other people about men's health, you know, incidence of prostate and testicular cancer would be much higher and more grave circumstances than we're able to see with early, early detection. So it's a good cause, and that's why we, we're not hunting tomorrow, we're supporting Movember, so.
Certainly, good luck.
Some, some, some might be hunting tomorrow.
Some may, yeah.
Mayor Protem Hoderek.
To kind of build upon Councilman Pennington's comments about Veterans Day, it was an outstanding ceremony here this year. Troy Police Lieutenant Russ Harden served as emcee, and the guest speaker was outstanding. And what was really outstanding were the number of city employees that were there being honored as veterans that also serve as public servants working here for our city. Same folks that were running around on Sunday to try to recover from what we were going through there, police officers. Forty-nine, I think, employees here are, were veterans, and that's common across our nation for veterans to come back home and, and serve in that way. So I want to acknowledge those 49 specifically. And HR Director Jeanette Menegh and her staff did a luncheon for them. And, you know, just, just to take a moment to thank them for their service on multiple levels, and we really do appreciate that work.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Next on the agenda are reports, any comments on the reports that are in the agenda packet this evening? Mayor Protem Hoderek.
One of, one of the letters that's in the council packet was to Chief Mayor from Larry Casey regarding the Citizens Police Academy. You know, there, there is a lot of anxiety in our nation after last week's election. You're either thrilled with the results or you're not. But you know what? At the end of the day, it's about our own backyard and understanding how our local government works. And things like the Citizens Academy, reading more about what went on Sunday and how our staff responded and what it took, stopping at, at our fire stations when they have the open houses. Citizens, the more you can do to understand how your local government runs, how those services come to you, the better our communities are. And I think if we can focus our energies there, you know, locking arms together to do that, that's a very good thing. And I just really want to commend again, I have numerous times from this table, the Police Department for undertaking the Citizens Police Academy. It's not a small endeavor. But everyone who participates benefits and talks about how they understand better the challenges of their PD and how outstanding it is. And we appreciate that effort, and I appreciate the people who take the time to be involved in that way.
Thank you. Any other comments about the reports tonight? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is a closed session this evening, so we will be in recess and adjourn in the boardroom for the closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.